shall be directed to the moderator. No back and forth between members of the meeting. After a member has spoken, they will not be called upon again until all others requesting to speak have had an opportunity to speak. Anyone wishing to speak at the town meeting must be a voter and if not, have the consent of the meeting. Only the voters may bid the ballot to the ballot box. If anybody needs assistance, we will have a justice of the peace come up and pick up your ballot and bring it here, but don't give it to your friend or somebody in your household to bring up for you. It needs to be a justice. Seven voters may ask for a paper ballot. If anybody arrives that is not a, has not signed into the checklist, please do that when you get here. We have two members from our legislature here, and I would actually turn it over to them if they want to speak. We have Senator Harrison and Representative Chase here to them. So you can both come up and speak to the meeting if there is no objection.
Hi, I'm Heather Chase. I'm your state rep and I represent Athens, Grafton, Wyndham and Chester.
Hi, I'm Winnie Harrison, your state senator. Glad I found you. I know where the town is, but I haven't been in this building before. Do you want me to say anything about what?
You can speak about what's going on in the legislature and what's coming up.
Okay, just a little bit. I live in Roddenboro. Had the honor to work with your chair in Bellas Falls, Rockingham. This is my first time in the legislature. I sit on, in the senate you have two committees. I sit on economic development, housing and general affairs as one committee, and then the other committee is institutions. And on the economic and housing committee, we've been working a lot on housing, obviously. That's a huge issue in the state. So what, we've just finished a bill in our committee. It still has to go to the rest of the senate and then to the, to the house. But we have a lot of good things in there. We are working on changing town zoning so that wherever you have a single family home, you can do a duplex. We're working on getting missing middle housing going, supports for mobile homes, mobile home parks, house sharing. We're trying to do a little bit of everything so that we hit the rental market, we hit the ownership market. So I'd be curious, not now because you have business to conduct, but just to hear about how your experiences are with housing here. And then we just passed the senate bill S5 that was pretty controversial about the clean heat standard. We had a lot of email on that, both for and against. And just to help you not be too worried about it, if you were opposed to it, after a two-year planning period, which was in the bill anyway, there's going to be another vote before we proceed. And the whole, vote of the legislature. The whole purpose of that bill is to help folks get off of fossil fuels. They don't have to get totally off of fossil fuels, but the idea is to find a source of income to help people weatherize their homes, put in clean wood heat, put in air-sourced heat pumps. There's a lot of controversy over heat pumps. You can keep your oil burner. The goal is just to get people away from fossil fuels because of the environmental considerations, but also because they're so expensive and so vol, the price is so volatile. You know, went up $2 a gallon last, this winter. So, so the idea is to get people off of that so you can still have it for the really cold times in winter, but use other cheaper and better for the environment fuels elsewhere. So I'll stop there. Thank you for the opportunity.
And I'm, like I said, I'm Heather Chase and I'm new as your representative this year also. And I'm in the house and I was put on commerce and economic development, and so that's my committee. And in the house, we only have one committee. One is enough. It's a lot of, I'm surprised to say how exciting unemployment insurance is. You know, but it is, it's really been exciting for me. And I have just a quick little newsletter here and how to get ahold of me. Some of our legislative priorities, of course, housing, a lot of work is going on in housing. A lot of work is going on in the paid and medical family leave. Lot of work on childcare. So very busy session. I think we're at over 300 bills that are being proposed and so a lot of work is being done. Stay tuned. I do want to let you all know I am going to be having some public forums in Chester and Grafton. If you'd like me to come to Athens, I'm more than happy to do that also. I'm going to have to leave the meeting because I have, I'm on the select board in Chester and they have their meeting right now and I have to report to them, but I'll just leave this with Hannah. Oh, there's one other thing that's really important to Athens that Hannah and I have been talking about. The Budget Adjustment Act was just passed, the house passed it, sent it to the senate, the senate sent it to the governor, so it's been passed. I think the governor's going to sign it next week, maybe this week. And in that is $3 million that is allocated to the agency of administration. And there's a list of all the towns in Vermont that the governor has felt needed help with the capital, or the capacity, help getting smaller towns to apply for grants. And so Hannah and I have been in touch and I'm going to be in touch with the select board. What, you, probably in a week or two, will be able, Athens was on the list and so you're one of the communities that are a priority. And so some of the projects that you want to work on and you want to get grants for and see all the way through, the person, the capacity is the really administrative help to write the grants, to follow through with the grants and all of that. So Hannah and I have been in touch, next week, the next week, you know, next couple weeks, we're going to be on it because the top 25, which you're in, no other towns of mine are on the list. But what happens is if you say, "We don't want the money, we don't want the help," then they're rapidly going to go down the list because what Vermont really wants to do and why we're doing this is to try to leverage a lot of the ARPA funds and all the funds that are coming in with grants. So we're going to be in touch about that. Thank you very much for your time and really appreciate serving you all in Montpelier and stay in touch. My information's right there.
Thank you.
And again, if anybody has come in that has not checked in with the clerks in the back, please do so, or if you see anybody come in. Article one, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board tomorrow to borrow money respectively if necessary for current expenses in anticipation of tax collection.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second. Is there any discussion on that? Are you ready for the question? Article one, to see if the town shall vote to authorize the select board to borrow money respectively if necessary for current expenses in anticipation and a collection of taxes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Here's the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Approved article one. Article two, to see if the town shall vote to collect taxes on the 10th of September 2023. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded on article two, to see if the town shall vote to collect taxes on the 10th of September 2023. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Here's the ayes have it. The ayes do have it and you've approved article two. Article three, to see if the town shall vote to publish a list of delinquent taxpayers in the town report.
The move we do?
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on this? Kate?
Kate Cova. I have, I have a question. I noticed that on the list, there are properties that have been three, four, up to six years delinquent. Is there any rule that we go by? How long do you let a property go before an action is taken?
My understanding, my understanding is that Darlene's practice has been if somebody is making payments on their delinquent taxes, that it won't go to tax sale, even though it's been like six years. That's what her practice has been.
I know we have had a tax sale a few, however, there have been taxes. Any other discussion? Are you ready for the question? Article three, to see if the town shall vote to publish a list of delinquent taxpayers in the town report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes, the ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. You've approved article three. Article four, to see if the town shall vote to approve $632,621.95 with $513,214.95 to be raised by taxes to defray town expenses.
I'll make the motion for the town to approve $600, excuse me, $632,621.95 with $513,214.95 to be raised by taxes to defray town expenses.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
For a second, is there discussion? Kate?
Yes, I have a question. I, I was looking on last year's, the amount to be raised by taxes and it was $374,232 and this year is $513. Why such a big difference?
I believe there was some surplus last year that was put into the, the amount so that wouldn't have to raise the full amount.
Also, another reason was our cost for our fire protection and our EMS services have gone up. We're no longer with Saxton's and those prices have gone up.
Yeah, a few people have noticed that the amount we have to raise for municipal portion of our property taxes is going from, if my math is correct, but we're going from $1.4 last year to $1.40 this year, which is over a third increase. But I just want to remind everybody that most years, about 60% of our property taxes go towards the schools. Last year was 61%. So it's like, okay, what's our school tax rate going to be this year? Well, at this time of the year, that's, that's an estimating game. We don't really know until July. We have our neighbor over in Grafton, Hardy Merrill, on the school board who's had a very good track record with the numbers. On the last Tuesday informational meeting, he cranked the numbers for Grafton, but for Athens separately. And, and the combination of Athens K through eight and plus the high school, those, those two tax amounts calculated together, he thinks we may be going, our school tax rate will be going down as much as eight cents. Or a worst-case scenario could go up by two cents, but he doesn't see that happening. So I, I factored that in. And so the combined, what I come up with for combined school and municipal, if we approve this article and then everybody walks out of the room, our taxes would go up by 10 and a half percent overall, school and town combined. If we, if we approve every single article and if the amount says warrant here and the special articles, it would go up by, it would go up by 11 and a quarter percent to, up to 15%. So that's, that's the, that's the real impact and that's still not good news, but that's the best information I think we have right now.
So if you take somebody's whose grand list is like $2,200 for just the town, their taxes will be going up 800, about $840 on top of what they pay now. And that's before what we really know the school's going to be. So that's something to kind of look at in dollar value is how many people in town are on fixed incomes and are going to have to, and that's for a mid-value. If your value is more than that, of course, your final tax is going to be much more than that. So when you put it into a dollar value of what somebody's taxes is actually going to increase and not just by the percent, it kind of makes you look at it a little different. And so people that are struggling right now to make ends meet are going to have to struggle and figure out where they're going to cut. And with fuel, oil and everything else still rising, you're going to see a lot of elderly people are going to really be suffering in town, a lot worse than nothing now.
Sherri Moore. So yeah, the numbers that Don was just describing, my calculation of that said that we're looking at a 37% increase in the amount that this budget seeks to raise by taxes. So a couple of questions and a real concern about passing this budget. So the questions would be that I see in the first section under municipal tax adjustment, it looks like at least for the last two years in a row, we've had a considerable amount of money come in, but we never budget for that. So that would be one question. Why is that not used to take the budget down?
That comes in and so we don't budget it in taxes. So that's, those are the homestead updates. So that's just, if you add up what comes in with taxes and what comes in as the tax adjustment, that's our total tax value.
So you are saying it is factored into the 513 even though the budget doesn't seem to reflect that?
That's the state's payment.
Right, I understand that. I'm just curious why it doesn't show here as, you know, a projected $30,000 off of the budget.
Because it doesn't, it, it, it doesn't, it, how do I phrase this? It's part of what we get in taxes.
Okay, I see.
Like we, it's part of what gets billed out. It's just the state pays it instead of people paying it. So people who are having a hard time.
So then what actually comes in under current taxes will be lower?
Yeah.
And that will be offset by what's in the municipal taxes.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, I understand it, but it's kind of a question that comes up when you look at the numbers and the way the budget is laid out. Some smaller things like the clerk fees was another place where that same thing, I know you don't, you can't know that number, but it looks like there might be a history there, so you might be able to kind of.
That doesn't offset taxes, that's my salary.
No, no, clerk fee.
Yeah.
Clerk fees are listed in here as income.
Right.
And.
But it's a wash.
It's a wash.
Yeah.
Okay. Again, I don't quite understand that, but I'm going to go to page 14. And what I see here on page 14 under highway payroll is that the, the road crew received some pretty, well, a 3% and a 7% if my calculations are accurate here, raises last year. This year, they're both receiving an 8% raise on top of those. And I guess what concerns me is that that is a significant piece of this budget and it's already been approved by the board, I believe, and it's been paid thus far since January and yet the town hasn't had a chance to vote on this as yet. So it's again, one of the quirks of the fact that we are not collecting taxes until September. We're voting on them in March. They've already started following this plan as of January 1st, so that's a bit of a concern. I guess, I don't have a number off the top of my head, but I feel like I would like to see us tonight either vote this budget down, saying, "We need you to come back with a lower number," or come up with a number to say that, "Let's amend this budget by a certain amount." And I would welcome anybody that has done better with the math on that than I have at this point. But that's all I can say. Thanks.
All right. So you ready for the question? To see if the town shall vote to approve $632,000.
We have a paper ballot.
Hold on. To see if the town shall vote to approve $632,621.95 with $513,213.95 to be raised to defray town expenses. We have a request for a paper ballot. Are there six other people? There are. So we will prepare paper ballots. Yes is to vote for the article. No is to vote against the article. And there are papers up here, do not have, do not have somebody else bring the ballot Has everybody voted that's entitled to vote? If not, I'll declare the ballot box closed. We have Steve Odom, Kate Cova, Harold Noyes, go up and count the ballots. All right, the results of your vote. Yes, 1440, no. Article four has been defeated. The select board and the committee will be working on a new budget and a new meeting will probably need to be called to approve, to vote on a new town budget. All right, article five, to see if the town shall vote to appropriate the sum of $1,140 for the support of the Southern Vermont Economic Development Strategies to provide workforce and economic coordination services to the Wyndham region. If, I believe there's a representative here from them. If there is, we'll have, is there an objection to her speaking from that? See, no objection, we will let you, let you speak on this. If, do it, Don, you make a motion to approve it?
As moderator, I make a motion. I move the amount of $650 for the support of Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies, to provide workforce and economic coordination services to Wyndham region.
How much?
$650.
Is there a second? Do you, would you speak to it?
Sure, I just wanted to say I have some sheets here that describe a little bit more about our work that I can leave here for you, but just to say the amount that we ask for generally is based on $3 per person in the town and we're happy to accept amendment if that is better for the town in light of budgetary costs going up this year. The services that we provide, right now, we've been actually talking with some members of the select board and the community center.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Could you stand up for us?
Sure, oh yeah, absolutely, I'm sorry. So we've just been, one of the things that, that we do is in addition, in addition to business development, is we also do work with community projects and community development. So we do lending through the USDA Community Facilities Technical Assistance Program. So we right now actually have an intake form for two projects for Athens to help the town with doing some of the feasibility and background work potentially for the town garage and for making improvements to the community center. So that's one of the services we provide. We also do workforce training through the high school. So we do a lot at Leland and Gray and also through the career center of doing workforce training for our high school students. And we are hoping to expand that to work with every high school and middle school in the region as we can. So that's something we do to help develop a pathway for students when they graduate to have a plan and know where they're going to go and know how to find good work without necessarily leaving the community. So that's one of the programs we do. We also do business support and I know Athens isn't a town with businesses, but I think a lot of you might drive out of Athens to go work in a business somewhere else. So we have lending services and business services available for anyone in the Wyndham region, which is 27 towns. We scoop up Ritzboro and we scoop up, you know, Weston, which is not in Wyndham County, but we have 27 towns that we provide services to. So we ask every town that will have us on their warning for $3 per person and we think Athens, we're considering that and putting it on this year's warning. I'll leave these for people to take with, so you know what we do. Sure. Can I change it? Because I had done the amount based on the previous population, but your population went down a little bit, five feet, so it went down.
All right. Thank you. Any more discussion on this? If not, are you ready for the question? Article five, to see if the town shall vote to appropriate the sum of $650 for the support of Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies to provide workforce and economic coordination services to the Wyndham region. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. You've approved article five. Article six, to see if the town shall vote to raise and appropriate and expend the sum of $500, which is a dollar and 31 cents for Athens residents for the support of the Grace Cottage Family Health and Hospital. Is there a motion?
How many more can we do?
Don makes a motion, we do. Do I have a second? Is there any discussion on this? Kate?
Is there any indication of what part of the hospital, any specific program?
I don't believe it's a specific program.
That this money goes to, just the hospital in general?
I believe. Any more discussion? Yes?
Just kind of curious to know, OJ Fajowski?
Yep.
What, what we've given to Grace Cottage in the past?
I don't believe we have had an article on the, on the warning for Grace Cottage Hospital. I don't believe. Any more discussion? You ready for the question? Article six, to see if the town shall vote to raise and appropriate and expend the sum of $500, which is a dollar and 31 cents for Athens residents for the support of the Grace Cottage Family Health and Hospital. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. You've approved article six. Article seven, to see if the town shall vote to appropriate the sum of $250 to support the Women's Freedom Center to provide quality advocacy to the sport of women of Athens.
So who?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? Article seven, to see if the town. To see if the town shall vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty dollars to support the Women's Freedom Center to provide quality advocacy and support for the women of Athens. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. You've approved Article seven. Article eight. To see if the town shall vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred and thirty dollars to support youth services to serve the needs of youth and families in and around Wyndham County. Grab the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Denise, second. Any discussion? Are you ready for the question? Article eight. To see if the town shall vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred and thirty dollars to support youth services to serve the needs of the youth and families in and around Wyndham County. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. You've approved Article eight. Article nine. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a thousand dollars to Southeastern Vermont Community Action to assist Athens in responding to emergency needs of the community and providing all available and applicable services.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I was wondering how the, what they provide is this different Senior Center and the Visiting Nurses Association? Is there implications in there?
She asked if there were duplications in the services that SEVCA and other agencies provide. Anybody wanna speak on that?
Matt Schag, I guess I can speak on that. SEVCA does a lot of weatherization and family services. There's actually separate services for seniors and other sorts of things like that. So it's definitely a separate thing.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Are you ready for the question? Just Article nine. To see if the town shall vote to raise and appropriate a thousand dollars for Southeastern Vermont Community Action to assist Athens in responding to emergency needs of the community and providing all available and applicable services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. You've approved Article nine. Article ten. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty dollars for the Bellas Falls Senior Center.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? All right, is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? To see if the, Article ten. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty dollars for the Bellas Falls Senior Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. You've approved Article ten. Article eleven. To see if the town shall vote to appropriate the sum of thirteen hundred and fifty dollars to help support the home health, maternal and child health, and hospice care provided in patients' homes and in community settings by the Visiting Nurses Association and Hospice of Vermont and New Hampshire.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? Article eleven. To see if the town shall vote to appropriate the sum of thirteen hundred and fifty dollars to help support the home health, maternal and child health, and hospice care provided in patients' homes and community settings by the Visiting Nurses Association and Hospice of Vermont and New Hampshire. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. You've approved Article eleven. Article twelve. To see if the town shall vote to raise and appropriate the sum of a thousand dollars to assist drafting cares and providing a variety of assistance to the people of Athens.
Moved and seconded. Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Here are none, are you ready for the question? Article twelve. To see if the town shall vote to raise and appropriate a thousand dollars to assist drafting cares and providing a variety of assistance to the people of Athens. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. You've approved Article twelve. Article thirteen. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred and fifty-six dollars to help support the outpatient, mental health, and substance abuse services by the Staff of Healthcare and Rehabilitative Services, HCRS, in accordance with twenty-four VSA twenty-six ninety-one.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ready for the question? Article thirteen. To see if the town shall vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred and fifty-six dollars to help support the outpatient, mental health, and substance abuse services by the Staff of Healthcare and Rehabilitative Services in accordance with twenty-four VSA twenty-six ninety-one. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed? The ayes appear to have it?
The ayes appear to have it.
The yeses have it. The yeses appear to have it. Rules of order. Article fourteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred dollars to assist senior solutions.
Moved.
Seconded. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? Article fourteen. To see if the town shall vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred dollars to assist senior solutions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. You've approved Article fourteen. Article fifteen. To set the time of future town meetings. Tom.
I'd like to see it go back to, is that due to you, Matt?
Me too.
At what time? At what time?
At eight o'clock.
Seconded.
The motion is to set the time for Tuesday, the first Tuesday in March at ten o'clock. Is there discussion on this?
David, can I say that even though we had it tonight, the numbers are about the same as we normally have at a town meeting on Tuesday?
I think we had fifty-nine voters here at the time. Heather?
I appreciate having it at six o'clock on Wednesday. I, I wouldn't be able to attend otherwise.
Your employer wouldn't allow you?
Mean employer.
This is not advocating for one position, one way or the other. My name's Krista Gay. I was on the committee that the select board put together last year, as well as Sheri and Witchy, who's not here tonight. And we surveyed the town and asked town individuals what time would work best for them. The most popular time that we received in our feedback was a Saturday morning. The second most popular time was evening in the week. And then the third most popular time was a Saturday afternoon. Again, I am not advocating for one time. It's just as a committee member, it was my responsibility to let voters know the results of that survey.
I believe by, by statute, we can have it on the traditional town meeting day, first Tuesday in March, or the three days prior to that. So it could be Saturday, Sunday, tonight, or Tuesday. But it can't be a week from now or two weeks earlier. It has to be within that four-day weekend.
And then, of course, there's limitations with that, with who responded, right? Like, we don't count the data based upon who responded. So if you didn't respond to that survey and you feel differently, please feel free to say so.
All right. Any?
Sure. Yeah, and I would like to just add a point to that from what Krista just said. And, and I think when we put that survey together, we weren't a hundred percent clear on the limitations that David just described. So in, in looking at it, we were interpreting that to say, Saturday before the first Tuesday of the month. It would be the weeknight, would be Monday night, the Monday before the Tuesday. Or weekday morning would have been the Tuesday morning, the traditional, because we didn't see any reason to do it on a Monday morning. We can't get a lot of people to come on Tuesday. But the other point I wanted to make was that we asked a couple of other questions, and some of them were relative to what might also encourage people to be more willing to attend town meeting. And I thought it was pretty telling that, again, the highest response to that was for people to feel that their voices mattered. So I think that that's an important thing to think about and understand, and how do we, how do we address that? The second most important point was moving it to a different time of day. So I will leave you with those thoughts as we contemplate this. Actually, no. I think what I would like to do is to make an amendment to it. And I would like to amend the motion to read that we would meet at six PM on Monday, the Monday prior to the first Tuesday of the month. Don't we have to vote this one down? Can we all make an amendment?
She can make the amendment. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Does she give a time on?
Six. Six o'clock. All right, is there further discuss, is there discussion on the amendment? And the amendment is to have it the Monday prior to the traditional town meeting day at six PM.
Can we have a paper ballot?
We can, but I'm asking for discussion at this point. If there is a discussion on the six PM.
Can I discuss, make a point?
Well, let's find out if anybody else wants to speak first. If anybody has anything to say? Jerry?
I would just like to say that while I look around the room here and I see a lot of the same familiar faces that I've seen at all of the town meetings that I've been at since moving to this town in ninety-three, I do see a few new faces, which I'm really pleased to see. And in thinking about the two points from the survey that I just shared with you all, I think that moving back to a Saturday, sorry, a Tuesday morning at ten o'clock automatically eliminates a whole bunch of people who have said they would like to try and participate in this. So I would urge you to support this amendment.
All right, is there anybody else? Yes?
I, I just have a question about the amendment. So when we vote, we're voting on the amendment, it's not voting either or?
Well, you vote, what you're voting on is the amendment. The amendment is to make the time six PM on the Monday prior to the traditional town meeting day. We will vote on that, and then we'll vote on, if that is amended, then we will vote again on the, the main motion, which will have been amended to make it that time. So you're gonna be voting twice, so. And Krista?
Uh, just to clarify, so if we vote yes, are we saying, yes, we want town meeting Monday at six? And if we say no, are we saying, no, we want it at a different time?
What, all you're voting on now is whether you want to approve the amendment, which was say at six PM on the Monday.
And then we vote again to determine if at six PM.
What day? So if you want the amendment, what we do is if the amendment is approved, you say, you vote yes, and that will change the motion, the original article, to six PM. What, Tom said ten on Tuesday? The amendment says six PM on Monday, so. So if you vote yes, it is for the six PM on Monday. No is to eliminate the amendment and then go back to the original motion. And Krista, you requested a paper ballot?
Yes.
Is there six others? Yes. All right, yes, to approve the amendment for six PM? No, to, yeah, not approve. Has everybody voted that's entitled to vote? If so, I will declare the ballot box closed. Denise Randall, Perry, Sandy Calipari, go up and count the ballots. Results of the ballot are thirty-six yes and twenty-two no. Are you, is there any discussion on the amended motion? If not, are you ready for the question? To set the time of future town meetings at six o'clock on the Monday preceding traditional town meeting.
Did you just vote on that?
No, we voted.
We voted on the amendment, and now we're voting on the actual motion, which was amended. The original motion was for ten o'clock. It was amended for six o'clock. We just voted on the amendment.
And it passed.
What?
And the amendment passed, right?
The amendment passed, and now we have to go and vote on the actual motion again.
He's doing it right here.
I'm confused, okay. Because the, the amendment would have been article, da, 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 da.
It's not an art, it's amended, so. All right, are we ready for the question?
So it seems like it's moving a little bit fast and people are just kind of catching up. I wanna make sure people have time to think through before we go ahead with this question. So right now, the question is going to be whether or not to have town meeting on Monday night at six o'clock.
No, no, that is not correct. The motion now is to have the, the meeting at six o'clock on the Monday preceding that.
At six o'clock on Monday?
At six o'clock, the Monday preceding town meeting. So you're wrong.
That's what I just, that's what I mean.
Does everybody understand? Is there any question to it?
If anybody wants to debate that issue now's the time. That's the point.
That's correct. Article fifteen. To set the time of future town meetings. And the motion is to set them at six o'clock on Monday prior to town meeting day. Is there any discussion on that?
Would we have that changed to a Tuesday at six o'clock? And then people could do all their voting that day? And you wouldn't have to run around and gather up their ballots? We could do it all on that Tuesday?
You couldn't, you could make that motion if you wanted to. Though it would, it would, it could complicate things in, in counting the ballots and having, it could, it could do that. But you could amend it if you wanted to, Linda. Do you want to amend it? Okay.
Oh, can I make that amendment?
Make it Tuesday?
That is the same, that, that is, the town meeting is at night the same day that the office or elections, that it's all the same day. Can I make that amendment?
You can make the amendment to amend the, to amend the motion to, uh, yes. Is there, is there, is there a second to that? All right, so the amendment that we're going to be voting on now is to amend the amended motion to have the meeting at six PM on Tuesday, town meeting day.
Can I say something at this time?
You open for discussion, yes.
Can I, can you call me?
Yeah.
Some other feedback that we were getting was that although it might be easier to show up at nighttime the day before, unless you mailing your ballot the day before, you do essentially have to go up to vote twice. And so that was some other feedback that I received or we've received about, for some people, it's hard to do it twice, even if you just mail it in. You have to remember to mail it in. So personally, I think that voting at night allows people who work to come. And then it also makes it easier to do everything all in one sweep, since presumably the, the voting would still be open by the time town meetings start. So I'll be voting in favor of it, because I think it just makes it much easier that you only have to come out once.
So I just wanna make it clear, even though town meeting will be happening, no matter what time town meeting is over, the polls close at seven o'clock.
That's correct.
Okay.
But you, I believe you can still vote here.
You can, as long as you get your voting done by seven o'clock. After seven o'clock, the polls.
We had that last year, though, I think.
Yeah.
So we've done it before.
Yes.
For, yeah.
I just had a question. I'm wondering if that means that we would have voting up here during town meeting?
Yes.
I'm wondering if whoever is running those polls would be like, I have to, I have to.
More than, more than likely, the voting would be held here on that day.
Oh, I just, I think, I think just for the election workers, it would be a very difficult evening, especially if the town meeting ran late. We wouldn't get to start counting. evening, especially if the town meeting ran late, we wouldn't get to start counting ballots until when this meeting ended. And that usually takes a couple hours to count and report ballots as well.
We were at it until, what, 10:30, wasn't it?
Yeah, the last election, I mean, I was there until almost midnight, but doing reporting.
It's almost 7:00 now. So if all the officers and everything's done via Australia ballot, that does cut our meeting time down some. So presumably, we should be down pretty close to 7:00. But you just never know how long, what issues are going to be.
And it will be a little bit tricky for them to keep count of who is here for this meeting and who is balloted, and they'll have to keep two checklists and stuff. But any other discussion? You ready for the, for the amendment?
Amendment to the amendment.
The amendment to the amendment is to hold town meeting on Tuesday, the traditional town meeting day, at 6:00 p.m. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The noes appear to have it? The noes do have it? And we go back to the original amended motion. Article 15, to set the time of future town meetings, and the amended motion is 6:00 p.m. on the Monday preceding traditional town meeting day. You ready for the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes appear to have it? The ayes do have it? The next regular town meeting will be 6:00 p.m. on the Monday preceding traditional town meeting day. Article 16, to transact any further business proper to come for said meeting. Krista?
Well, Jack.
Jack? Why don't you come up front, Jack, and you can talk on the school issue?
Okay, great. Hi, I'm Jack Byer, and I am tour, about the next eight hours, chair of your Athens Grafton School Board. And I wanted to talk to you about, about the budget and some of the articles, because we did have a meeting, we sort of combined Grafton's pre-town meeting with the, with the pre-town meeting or pre-district meeting of the, of Athens Grafton District. And I know a lot of people didn't come, there was some confusion about that, and I thought it was only fair to talk to you about what the budget is and what the articles are, because quite candidly, we spend about two-thirds of your money. So you want to know what we're spending the money on and why we're asking you for what we ask you for. How many of you understand Balkan system that we have that runs schools in this part of Vermont? I don't see any hands. Good, because I wouldn't understand it if I wasn't on the board. There are, there is a supervised reunion that provides Athens, Grafton, Westminster, and Rockingham. And it's called Windham Northeast Supervised Reunion. It is a clearinghouse for the individual boards to coordinate matters such as curriculum, but it does a lot more than that. It owns your school buses and pays your bus drivers. It pays for special ed, it's about a third of your cost for running schools. It supervises principals in conjunction with the individual district boards. That's how it works. You have a separate Bellas Falls Union High School Board, where you've got one representative. Grafton has one, it's a 10-member board. They manage the high school, but they also coordinate with the supervisor union. Then you have individual district boards. Rockingham has its own, Westminster has its own, and Athens and Grafton, since they were able to separate as a separate district, back to the way it used to be, work as a union elementary school board, which is the way the high school goes. So that's how, that's the structure. Now, I tell you this because when you look, I don't know how many of you have looked at the, this rather fancy district SU report, but it has everybody in here. It has Westminster, Athens, Grafton, High School, and you have to dig around to find the stuff that you vote on. And I want to make sure that people got to see it, so there are copies back there. If you want to take a look at them tonight before you vote, that's fine. I just thought that before, before you did, I'd give you a quick, you know, summary of what it's going to tell you. The supervised reunion budget, there's an eye-popping number in there, because it shows $10 million that it didn't show last year, and that's because you were spending that money before, but we now have transparent budgets. This is the money that comes in from the federal government, from, or things like Title I, for money that goes to special ed, and it's a, it used to block ramps, and we used to tuck them in with sort of artificially elaborated numbers that really didn't mean anything because of block ramps. So you'll see that number on, I think it's page 11, if you decide to dig into it. If you took that money out, because you've always been spending it, but didn't see it, you'll see that, if anything, we have a small reduction. It works out to, actually, not that small, it's $520,000. But it's partly offset by staff development costs, because we had COVID, and there's been a lot of educational casualties, so we're trying to train teachers to handle essentially two years of instruction in one. There is a big tech services jump of close to $400,000, and that's because we didn't spend any money on updating any of the equipment for almost five years, and things started to break, and we need to fix them. But the bottom line is that the, that the difference between this year and last year is actually a small reduction effectively, and that's despite the fact that we also gave our staff raises this year because of top set inflation. I can talk to you about the Bellas Falls budget if you want, but I'm not the Bellas Falls Union High School rep. If you want me to, I will, otherwise I'm going to leave that alone, so you decide, and either I'll talk or make this shorter than it otherwise would be. Athens and Grafton, the so-called Windham Northeast Unified Elementary School District, which someday we're going to change to a real name. What we're asking for is $1,756,793. Now, that's a lot of money, but it's also $20,000 less than we asked last year. That's despite the, despite the fact that we're paying teachers more. And we have, quite candidly, a slightly more educated, with more tenure, teacher community, so it actually should cost more. So we made a lot of adjustments. We've done a lot of shoving around of money. Part of what has made this work is that, you may have heard that we have some difficulties with the finance office, it's only on the front page, about half of the past year. The bottom line for our area is a surplus of that around $183,000 that we're going to apply towards this budget to make it all work. It still means that your per pupil cost is actually going up by about $700, but it's going up by $1,000 for the high school. And one of the reasons that it's going up for you is because the actual number of kids you have in school is well below something that's called your, your equalized pupil count. Your equalized pupil count can only go down by about 3% a year. It's a shock absorber for small districts that have highly durable populations. So that gives you a lot of breathing room, but that breathing room doesn't extend forever, but it certainly gives you enough for the next several years. The Athens rate coming out of this looks to be around 82 cents, down from 98 cents, but as Dawn said, these are estimates, and we have, we've had superintendents and finance folks come in and tell you, that's the number, well, they don't really know that's the number, because the state has to go through its own calculus washing machine. I will say that they've made arithmetical errors in the past, and I'll also say that Hardy, Merrill, and I have corrected them for them on multiple years, and that we're working off the state number. I actually think it might be a bit lower than that. You can find that data on page 51 of your, of your fancy SU report. So one other thing I wanted to explain to you, because it's really kind of weird, we have a number of articles, I think it's article three through six, something like that, that asks you to park money for future years. And I've been asked, why would we do that when we just give it back to you? Well, obviously, we're bureaucracy, we don't want to give it back to you. But the real reason is because small schools operate on a knife edge. You get five more kids going to middle school where you tuition, the slightest change at all can put you over the so-called excess spending penalty. The excess spending penalty only happens to small schools. Big schools, it doesn't happen to, because big schools can handle the psychologists that you're mandated to have, can handle the therapists that you're mandated to have, can mandate all these things that, you know, Burlington can handle, but a school like Athens and Grafton becomes a real thing in terms of being able to pay it and stay within the so-called limit. Well, here's the thing. Every penny that you pay over that artificial limit that is mostly state mandated expenses, you have to pay an additional penny back to the state. So we don't want you to have to do that. So what we've done is essentially, we call it Operation Snowplow, we're taking the, that surplus, and we're pushing it forward to fill in any gaps in expenses. If you have something happen to the library, again, we have to fix it, or if you, if 10 more folks come into town with kids to go to middle school, you'll have it covered, you won't automatically drop into penalty. And we, with this process, you'll notice there's an allocation for this year, allocation for the next year, allocation for the year after that, and we all agreed that it was fiscally, you'd make, you'd save more money.
It's responsible.
Yeah, in the long run, by quite a bit, if you agreed to these additional, these additional articles. And I just wanted you to know why they were there, because if you just read them and think, what on earth is this? So that's what we're trying to do. We're basically trying to keep you out of the excess spending threshold for the next three years, maybe more if you want. And it also gives you time, because school population's dropped a lot. It's dropped by almost a third post-COVID. And I don't know if those kids are all coming back. I hope they are, because the school, I think you're going to see school ratings statewide this coming year that are going to be pretty impressive in terms of what the output is for the school. But if we don't get those students back over the next couple of years, there's going to be some hard decisions that you're going to have to make about 2026. But we want to make sure that you had time enough to think that through and figure out what you want to do. If you want to plow ahead and keep the school, if you want to close it and send the kids elsewhere, you'll have time to figure it out. You don't want to be doing it on an, oh my God, it's an emergency kind of basis. So that's what we've done for you, that's what's in those articles, and if anybody's got any questions, well, go right ahead. I see one anyway.
Yes, you said that it was a $700 decrease for the elementary kids and $1,000 on the high school kids.
It's per pupil cost, actually.
Per pupil, yeah, yeah. Oh, okay, so it's.
So that's why, yeah, that's why what you're looking at looks different than what?
Right. Sorry. So, but my real question is, can, do you know the tuition, if you want to call it, that per pupil?
Yeah. Now, tuitions are set by the district.
Well, I mean, isn't it a function of how many students you have into the budget?
It, that is the ceiling of how much we could charge if we wanted to.
If you drive the pupil into the budget?
So what we've done, but you can set it lower, and we have set it lower, because candidly, if I get 11 kids or 10 kids in second grade, and I add one more kid that tuition's in, I, there's no additional cost to me. Doesn't cost me a dime more to educate 12 kids in that class than it does to educate 11. So we've set the, we've set the tuition rate lower than by about half of what we could.
I think it's at 15, isn't it?
Yes.
I think we did $15,000 for tuition.
Okay, I guess that's the bad word to use, then, tuition, because that means something about kids traveling. What I'm saying is, how much per kid are we spending?
Around 22.
Well, you're spending around 22.
Around 22 for a child.
And that's grade school?
Yeah.
And you know whether it's high school?
High school, I don't know.
That's K through six. Middle school is tuition.
Middle school already is tuition. Yeah. And we pay the tuition.
Pay tuition for high school, too, so.
Right. But let's see, I've got the, the, no, it's 70 cents. Page 24 will give you the, the quick and dirty there. theirs is $19,660. And it's up from $18,669, oh, excuse me, $19,850 for 2022, $18,669 for 2023, and this coming year, they're asking for $19,660. There you go.
Any questions?
Is there a question, Jack?
Yes.
So out of the whole Athens Grafton budget, what percentage does Athens pay out of that whole budget?
I, you know, I have to tell you, I don't know, partly because there's two, two things at work. I think it was, let me go see if I can quote that number for you. You know, one of the things you have to understand is, and this is going to sound weird, you don't really pay directly anything to the school. What you do is you pay the state, it turns around, pays a percentage back to the, back to the, the school system. It's not, it's really a state-funded system, but you pay in property taxes that are income-sensitive, so you're paying sort of a combination of property taxes and about a third of your sales tax actually goes to support the school system. So you have this kind of weird hybrid, and people ask this all the time, because there've been years where we've shown decreases in budgets and increases in taxes. They'll say, what kind of magic is this? And that's why. A lot, your ultimate bill is going to be dependent in a large part on how much the legislature, the folks that were here earlier, decided to allocate to local, funding local schools, and I got nothing on that. So it really, there have been years where that money was cut, and everybody had a big increase in the property tax and wondered what happened, and there've been other years where money's been added to it, and it's dropped even though individual schools spent a lot more.
Any other questions?
I think that the, and I'm not sure I'm accurate on this, but I think that the ratio is like 18th from Athens and 16th from Grafton, or something of that nature. It's almost half, or almost about.
About that for a number of years. You know, Grafton tends to be property, you know, property wealthy, even if it's not income wealthy. Athens tends to be the, you're, you haven't had a reappraisal for a while, so some of that stuff gets skewed, and the state uses a formula to offset some of that, which you guys probably know more about than I do, but that's part of the compensation factor. If you want to learn more about it, there's always vacancies available to run for, and I'll encourage you to, you know, get a great education in this stuff, and I've been doing it off and on for high school, for the elementary school for about 20 years, and I think I've finally figured it out, but. finally figured it out, but. No, 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 we've had a discussion with people. Yes?
Jack, I would just like to thank you immensely for the service that you've given to the children and.
I appreciate that.
All right?
All righty.
Jack, is your marker?
It's actually yours, I swept it, but bring it back and put it where it belongs.
I'm the coordinator for Greenup, for those of you that don't know me, and if you are able to help us out this year, please sign up at the back, and I will get us all coordinated. As I, if you would like to do just your road frontage, that's even a help. So whatever you can help me with, I'd love to have your name there and I'll get in touch with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sure.
Ginger, Macuski, and I are the editors for the Athenian, and there's a sign up back there on the table, so if you're not already getting the Athenian newsletter, it comes out monthly September through June, you can sign up there and you'll get it by email. Also, on behalf of the eating house, I would just like to have everybody mark their calendars that the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, which I can't remember the date, I think it's the 26, 27, something like that, will be the sixth plant sale at the eating house. So mark your calendars, start thinking about plants that you're going to divide out, and come join us.
Thank you.
All right.
We still have hot coffee and desserts, so on your way out, if you want to grab some, this benefits this building, so please take some on your way out. There's a Grady Clinic at the town office this coming Saturday, the 11th, from 1:30 to 3:30, if you want to bring your dog down and get it registered and vaccinated.
You can bring cats too.
Cats too.
Cats too, but just if you can have your dogs on a leash, that'd be appreciated, so we don't have any dog fights. Anybody else?
Yeah, you know, it hasn't been that many years that we've had a budget committee, and I'm personally, I'm very thankful, we do have one. They don't, they don't need any money for participating, it's volunteer, they work pretty hard at it, and they, they have to endure the same consequences as the rest of us as far as tax care, so I just wanted to thank them, you know, for all the work.
A lot of work. All right? Anybody else have anything? If not, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'm willing to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? The ayes have it.